Okay, keep going.
Okay. So, moving on to the look of our entire budget. This is our list of funds and expenditures for every fund that we have. And you will notice there at the total that we're currently estimating that we're going to spend about $258.8 million overall for the district. And our tentative budget is at $416.6 million. Some of the line items with significant changes are the Capital Projects Fund. And this is the scheduled maintenance money that we're receiving as well as the mandated cost carryover from prior year. So, we didn't spend all the mandated cost money in the 15-16 year, but that's carrying over into the 16-17 year. The other significant change is with the Contract Community Education Fund. And as part of the CTE report tonight, Melissa did cover that we do have a new contract ed for mechanical maintenance projects or program. So, that is a good contract ed education that we have, that we have not had in the past. The other change, the General Obligation Bond Fund. This only includes Measure E. We have not included Measure LB at this point in time. That will be included in the adopted budget. We felt it would be prudent to wait for the county to certify our results before we put it into our tentative budget. So, that should be coming forward to the Board in July for certification of the election for Measure LB.
Are you saying maybe it didn't pass?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that we felt it would be more prudent for the county to certify the results before we put it in our budget.
You accountants, yeah.
Yeah, us accountants. The Self Insurance Fund, you see that we have a decrease of about $1.2 million from what we're estimating that we're going to spend this year and what the tentative budget is. And that is due to some settlement of negoti-- or not negotiations, of litigation that we settled in 15-16. And we are hoping and don't anticipate additional litigation in 16-17. So, those are the changes there. All right, so moving into the Unrestricted General Fund, the overall summary. You can see there, the top line is the revenues and other financing sources. So, we are estimating that we're going to receive $134.3 million. The tentative budget has $124.2 million for a decrease in revenues of $10 million. As I mentioned earlier, the majority of that decrease, $9.4 million of it, is due to the decrease in the one-time mandated cost funds that came from the state this year that will not be here in 16-17. And then the other $600,000 is a decrease in apportionment because we don't have growth or COLA coming forward. On the expenditure side, we are estimating that we're going to spend $134.5 million. We've put into the budget $133.3 million for a slight decrease of about $1.2 million. And I'll go into detail on a couple slides of what makes up that. Our surplus and deficit, we are projecting a deficit in both years. So, for the current year, 15-16, we're estimating that we'll have a slight deficit of about $175,000. In the tentative budget, however, you see that we have a deficit of $9.1 million. $6.8 million of that deficit is a concerted effort for one-time allocations that have been made. And the next slide, I'll show you the breakdown of those one-time allocations for that. So, what this is saying is that we do have an ongoing deficit in the budget of about $2.3 million. The fund balance, the estimated actual, we're estimating it'll come in at about $25.4 million, which is just under 19 percent. The tentative budget, if it works out the way that it has been planned, our fund balance will decrease and will be at about $16.4 million, which is just over 12 percent in the fund balance. So, here's the deficit analysis that I was referring to and why $6.8 million of that is one-time. So, we have allocated in this budget $5.5 million towards the business process reviews and design thinking. We have $1.2 million that is part of the mandated cost carryover for the money we received in 15-16 that wasn't spent, that's going to roll into 16-17. And then we've allocated $50,000 for a classification study that Human Resources will be undertaking for all classified employees. So, there's where we're saying about $6.8 million of the deficit are one-time expenditures and will not continue. But that does leave about a $2.3 million ongoing structural deficit that we are going to need to look into in future years.
Anne Marie, if you can go back, last slide, can you remind me, I'm sure you've explained this to me before or to the Board, what is that 5.5, approximately, over $5.5 million based on? And did it come to the Board for approval? What's the detail of the number?
Well, a portion of that has come to the Board for approval. So, one...
Was it about a million dollars approximately is what I recall proving? I just don't know what that 5 million is supposed to cover. It's a little nebulous.
Right. So, within the, about a million and a half has already come to the Board for approval. So, part of the Budget Advisory Committee's recommendations was that the mandated cost money that we're receiving this year, so the $1.9 million that we're receiving for mandated cost, we will use entirely for the business process reviews and design thinking. In addition to that, the Budget Advisory Committee recommended that we allocate another $3 million towards the business process reviews and design thinking. So, what this, what we're saying is that we've done the business process reviews for financial aid, for academic services, and for purchasing. We're in the process of doing the design thinking for financial literacy for students. So, the money that has already been allocated for this year was for those programs and to implement the recommendations related to those programs. In addition, we need to do more business process reviews. So, we need to look at enrollment services. We need to look at human resources. We need to look at the accounting area. And there's other student service areas that we need to look at. So, in order for us to do a complete comprehensive reinvestment in our PeopleSoft system, we need to make this one-time allocation so that we can appropriately address all of the touch points that students have and that our employees have to try to streamline our processes and improve how the system works for us to try to free up some of our staff's time so that they can work on other things.
So, it's approximately 5.5 and some change to do an analysis. Is this contract work?
Yes, this will all be contract work.
It seems high to just do an analysis.
Well, it's an, it's the analysis plus the implementation.
And then 1.2, when you said you had 1.9 mandated costs, is that built into the 5.5?
Yes.
And then the additional mandated costs, is that attributed to previous year for the same work?
Not for the same work. That 1.2 million, as I mentioned, is really for the website design and implementation, the communication plan implementation. You know, it also comes into play for some Title IX implementation, strategic plan implementations, some professional development, as well as some instructional equipment and technology money.
Is that codified in detail or itemized in the budget as far as what the, what you just described?
No, most of that you will see in the 5,000 category. So, a lot of it is in professional services or other services.
That gets accumulated to over 1.2 million, right?
Correct.
From previous year? And then also the 5.5, is that also in the same category? So, it's a combination of a lot of $5,000? Wow.
Right.
That's why I care a lot about itemizing those purchase orders and those contracts. And I'm glad we did that because when you look at the big picture, I mean, it adds up to 5.5 million. I don't know how many $5,000 are in that, you know? It's quite a lot. Is there a way we can cut that spending or curb it? It just seems a lot of money to be just, you know?
Well, we haven't contracted for all of it. This is an estimate. So, it's an estimate based upon the costs that it took to undergo the business process reviews for the three areas that we already underwent. We received the implementation plans for those areas. And so, based upon that analysis and the detail of the work that needs to be done, we are estimating what the cost could be to do all of the other areas that we haven't even addressed at this point in time.
Is there a, if we don't proceed with it to finish the whole thing, do we, what were the consequences?
Well, I think we would do a disservice to the college. You know, we have to remember that PeopleSoft was put into place in 2000. There have been a lot of changes. They, the, I'm going to say needs, but the interaction with students have changed drastically since 2000. And we really haven't kept up to date with what these students expect from a software interactive process with them. So, this is really going to help us to get into the 21st century where our students are. It's also going to help us to eliminate, hopefully, extra work that our staff is doing. I mean, when we went through the financial aid process, you know, we were finding out that, oh, well, they're keeping a side spreadsheet over here to track that, and then they're doing this process over here to do that, when really, if you make changes in the system, the system will do that for you. And you don't have to keep all these double and triple systems and double work that our staff is currently doing because they don't know that there's another way. So, this is really teaching everyone that, hey, there could be another way to where we can work smarter and get things done more efficiently.
Okay, keep going.
President, can I just add one thing if I may, President Otto, too? This, this effort really is designed as well to really significantly improve the front door experience for students. And this is tied to enrollment management ultimately. It's tied to our budget and our ability to be able to get students in seamlessly. The first barrier that they reach when they come to the college, if it's too difficult for them, they've got 26 other community colleges locally and what are eight or nine of them within 25 miles or so that they can go to relatively easily. So, this is all part and parcel of the entire effort to try to significantly improve the student experience when they come to the college.
Can I just ask President Otto, if I may? I want to make sure, has staff bought off on this? I've been through this process as a member of staff in public agencies that I've worked at. And I got to tell you, I've seen so many dollars spent on systems and optimizing the existing systems. And staff keep, kept deferring back to their old ways because they didn't buy off in the process and they didn't really, weren't part of the process. Have they, have they really bought off on this use of this new way or systematizing it? Or is it something that is in process right now for consensus?
It's in process right now, but I would say that there is a lot of excitement from the staff to see, oh, wow, that's going to make my life so much easier. I mean, we had several comments from the classified staff from that manner. Now, does this mean that it's not going to be a lot of work? Absolutely not. This is going to be a huge undertaking for the college and for the staff to get these things implemented. But what we're trying to do is break it down in small bits so that they can see that we're making progress, you know, to try to keep that excitement up as we're going through and so that they can see that the efforts that they're putting in, taking away from their daily duties to do something new, is going to be fruitful in the end. So, you know, I think, I don't know if Dr. Peterson or Dr. Long want to chime in because it's their staffs that were really starting off on the implementations, but, you know, everything I've heard is that there is an excitement around it.
Greg.
She's shaking us out, yes.
The record should reflect that he was nodding his head up and down in a vertical.
So, our, our staff want to serve our students the best we possibly can, and our current systems don't do that. And so, our staff are so excited that we're actually having conversations about the change they've been asking for, for years. And so, really, this is, this is our opportunity. So, there's, there's a lot of support.
So, staff is being engaged in the conversation and the discussion. And I, and I know that many of the positions that we currently have are so outdated because technology has changed a lot of how, what we do and how we perform certain tasks. So, I, I think it's necessary. I think it's important, very valuable.
Right. Dr. Long.
I would say that we are being very inclusive in these conversations. We are really identifying areas for improvement. And it is absolutely something that everybody wants. As Greg said, we all want to be able to do our jobs in a more efficient manner and to spend more time serving our students. And that's exactly what the outcome of these processes is going to give to us. And so, it is absolutely essential that we're doing it and the people are excited about it. And we expect great things as a result of it.
Anne Marie, let's push ahead quickly. I know.
Would you just like to go to the last page?
No, the next to last page, though, might be.
The next to the last page, okay. So, revenue summary, you know, I've basically covered the changes in this. That 9.4 million decrease that you see there under other state, that is the one-time mandated cost money that we don't have. So, here pictorially or pie chart, graphically, however you want to call it, is what makes up our revenue. 90 percent of our revenue comes from FTES. And then we have 7 percent is other state revenue, 2.6 is local. We have about 0.3 in other sources and 0.1 in federal. Of the state apportionment piece, that 90 percent, you know, 79 and a half percent is coming from the state in either state general apportionment or EPA funds. EPA is the Education Protection Account or Education Protection Act or also Prop 30. So, we are very reliant upon the state revenues as we know. So, about 15 percent come from property taxes locally and 5 percent is coming from our enrollment fees.
So, I just, we had to pass for that. That's Prop 30 that's taking that larger, that's 17 percent or 16.7 percent? And where, where, there's still the uncertainty of whether Prop 30 is going to be continued?
Yes, so that is Prop 30, that 15.7 percent. We currently receive about $17.5 million from Proposition 30. 21 percent of that approximately is related to the sales tax increase and 79 percent is related to the income tax. As we know, the way Proposition 30 was written, the sales tax increase is set to expire December 31 of 2016. And then the personal income tax is set to expire December 31 of 2018. Now, when the governor built the budget and the budget that he just signed today, he made the assumption that Prop 30 was expiring. So, our revenue budget that we are showing here, that state principal apportion amount of $111,863,000 is based upon the governor's budget with Prop 30 expiring. So, I don't anticipate in the current year that we will have a decrease in funding. I also don't anticipate that we would have an increase in funding if a ballot initiative made it to the November election and was passed. You know, the governor is just not going to change his budget mid-year. So, it is a concern. I think the way the state has budgeted for it, they've built it in. So, hopefully, we won't see a significant impact in the current fiscal year anyway.
I just know in the past, we did, we essentially ran two budgets, one with the assumption it was going to pass, then Prop 30, and one that it was not going to pass. And you still can do that, correct?
You could still do that, but I wouldn't because the governor has already built it in, assuming it's not going to pass. And so, what he's put in there, I think, is a more conservative budget, which is what we're putting in there. And this governor, I wouldn't think, he hasn't really been amenable to making mid-year changes. And so, I, that's why I said, if, even if Prop 30 extension does pass, I doubt he would increase our budget in January because of it. So, I think our 16-17 numbers are set.
So, let me make an observation, not about the budget, except indirectly. And that is that it's now almost a quarter of 10. We have a half a dozen items beyond this tentative budget, which by the way, is a tentative budget, meaning that we've already heard it's going to change a lot. So, I would rather not spend very much time here because as soon as we finish this agenda and you all go home, we go back to a closed session, which will probably last a couple of hours as it should. So, so let's keep moving.
How about if I just open it up to questions?
Good. Anybody have any more questions? Entertained a motion to approve the tentative budget?
So moved.
It was moved by trustees Kellogg, Baxter, Archuleta, and Zia. Oh, sorry, then nobody can second it, I guess.
Second.
Baxter has seconded it. Kellogg made it. Any more discussion? All in favor, roll call vote.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
9.2, Education Protection Account Funding and Expenditures. This is Proposition 30, the School and Local Public Safety Act. This is an action item, and the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approve the use of the estimated 17 and a, 17 and a half million dollars of the Education Protection Account proceeds resulting from the passage of Proposition 30 to partially fund instructional salaries and benefits for the 2016 fiscal year as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Zia did it? Okay. And then Baxter seconded it. Questions or comments? Jeff?
I don't want to get too long in the discussion. We just had it, we're, Proposition 30 is not going to be continued. And yet, here we are doing the Prop 30. It seems like this is a contradiction to what we just had a previous conversation on. Now, we're going to spend the money that we're not going to get?
And not, not only that, but by my calculations, it's half, it pays the salaries of half of our full-time faculty. So, that if it doesn't pass and we don't have this $17 million, which we're going to basically use one-time money for to do that, I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not saying we, we have a problem, but the response that I get when I talk to people about this is, oh, the state will come up with it. They'll redo the formulas and everything will be worked out.
Right. So, if I could clarify, this board item is required by Proposition 30. So, what they want us to do is to have the Board say, how are we going to be spending this 17 and a half million dollars that we are going to be receiving that they have put into the budget that we think that we will receive this year? What we're saying is that all of it's just going to go to our instructional salaries and benefits. So, this is really just kind of a perfunctory board item that we're required to do every single year. And if Proposition 30 goes away, this board item goes away.
So, I mean, but, but will we be $17 million shorter? And if not, where would it come from?
No. We would, we, in the 16-17 fiscal year, we will not be 17 and a half million dollars shorter if Proposition 30 expires as planned.
So, there's no impact in 16-17?
That is the estimate and assumption at this point in time, yes.
I like how you qualify that because you never know with Sacramento.
Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a vote?
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
9.3, Resolution 2016-17 Debt Service Estimate for Los Angeles County. This is an action item. It's recommended that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution number 062816A to authorize debt service estimates to provide to the County of Los Angeles respecting authorized but unsold general obligation bonds. It's the current intention of Long Beach Community College District to issue bonds not to exceed $125 million during the 2016-217 fiscal year as submitted. And...
So moved.
So moved by trustee, seconded by trustee Archuleta. Any discussion?
Word, President Otto?
Yes.
If I may, this is an estimate of what we're going to be issuing. We are planning on issuing in September. So, we will have a resolution coming back to the Board to authorize that issuance at the July Board Meeting. We do have a change. I don't think you guys need to, to change your motion, but I just wanted to let you know, the attachment that we had A-3-1, we are changing those dollar amounts because what we're doing is we're working with our financial advisor and our underwriters on a daily basis. And they are consistently trying to restructure that will best benefit the taxpayers. So, the numbers that are appearing in Board Docs will change slightly when we submit that to the county, just so you know.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Here's 9.4, Resolution Cash Flow Temporary Interfund Cash Borrowing. This is an action item. It's recommended that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution with a certain number to authorize short-term borrowing between the funds of up to $21.5 million as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, was it trustee Zia? Seconded by trustee Archuleta. Discussion? Comments? Roll call vote?
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
9.5, Resolution Cash Flow Borrowing from the Los Angeles County Treasurer. It's a recommend, action item. It's recommended that the Board of Trustees adopt a certain resolution to authorize short-term borrowing of up to $105.5 million from the Los Angeles County Treasurer as submitted. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
To my trustee Zia, seconded by...
Second.
Trustee Baxter. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
9.6, Resolution for General Obligation Bond Measure LB Fund Establishment. This is basically to set up a separate fund for the LB monies and that we're kind of required to do this. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zia, seconded by...
Second.
Trustee Archuleta. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
9.7, Resolution Agreement with the California Department of Education. This is an action item. It's recommended that we, that the Board of Trustees adopt a certain resolution authorizing the district to enter into a grant agreement with a certain number with the Department of Education as submitted. It's to provide a preschool program and development services through its, through our child development center.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zia.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Archuleta. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Roll call vote.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. 9.8, This is a Resolution Regarding Contractual Agreements and Amendments to Agreements Under 175,000 Dollars. It's recommend, it's action item. It's recommended the Board of Trustees adopt a certain resolution to authorize the Vice President of Administrative Services or Designee to execute agreements and amendments to agreements under 175,000 dollars as submitted. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee, Archuleta, seconded by trustee Baxter. Discussion?
Yes, I had a question. I had asked for an analysis on the dollar threshold last year when this came up, and I still haven't seen it as it relates to comparison to other districts. What are their dollar thresholds? It seems to be rather high. Has staff done an analysis, a study to see what other districts do and how we compare to them?